We're just waiting for Ms. Gail to get up.
Yeah, and I'll, Ryan's coming as well. All right, and there's Gail. Here's Ryan.
Good afternoon, all.
Right on time. Without further ado, I'll call to order Village Council Zoning Board of Appeals Special Session tonight, Monday, August 30, 2021. We're meeting via electronic Zoom. And should we take? We'll do the roll call afterwards. We'll say the pledges, pledge of allegiance now. When you're ready, I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as for all.
Take a moment to remember and keep in our prayers those service members and allies of ours left in burst in Afghanistan in their recent weeks.
Roll call for August 30th, 2021 Village Council Meeting in Village of Vicksburg. Trustee Reister. All right, we're gonna try to get trustee Reister's mic working. I see her and I know she'll give me a thumbs up if she hears me. Okay, I might. I'll work on that a second, Gail, to try to get your volume. Is this a computer you use last week? It's probably in your settings, so maybe log off and can you log on on the other one? Okay, so we do have Gail Reiser in the meeting, but we'll, we still have a quorum to move on and she'll log off and come back in. Trustee Olson.
Here.
Trustee Holmes.
Here.
Trustee Keller.
Here.
Trustee Wagner.
Here.
President Frisbee.
Here.
And trustee Merrill has to be excused. She's conflict out of town.
What we have in front of us tonight? If there's, Jim, has there been any last minute changes or updates to it?
Yes, trustee Olson asked to add under committee reports, CATS Committee.
So noted. This has 12D. Any other clarifications or questions on it? If not, we'll. We'll need a motion to approve the agenda.
Trustee Wagner will make that motion.
Trustee Olson, I'll second.
Motion's made by trustee Wagner, seconded by trustee Olson, approval of the agenda. Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion still passes. Trustee Reister will be coming into the meeting here within 30 seconds.
We have no scheduled appearances or public official appearances scheduled tonight. Anyone join on a call, Jim?
Um, there are four representatives from EMO Corporation, our Parks and Rec Chairman and our village attorney. And I don't see any other citizens, but if someone wished to speak in the open comment section, just move your cursor and hit the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen, but I think they're all affiliated with the village.
Well, hearing none, then we'll move to citizens' comments. We have any agenda items and non-agenda items that a citizen would like to speak to? Please, as Jim was saying earlier, toggle your star six on your cell phone. And or at the bottom of the Zoom page, you'll have a place to raise your hand if you'd like to speak.
I will take one more look here. I don't see anyone's hand raised, Mr. Frisbee.
Well, we have a general cassette agenda in front of us. Everyone's had a chance to review it and check. I know there was a lot of, lot of minutes and a lot of our interim clerk, I appreciate the notes that you took, very, very spot on and accurate. Thank you, Jim. Anyone have any clarifications or comments to add to it? Well, hearing none, we entertain a motion to accept this in the council.
Trustee Wagner, I move we accept the meeting minutes as submit.
Trustee Keller, second.
Trustee Wagner makes a motion to approve the consent agenda supported by trustee Keller. Here, no questions or comments. Roll call vote trustee Reister.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. 10 is our council action items tonight. We're here to listen to zoning board of appeals. We'll need a motion to move into the public hearing for such.
Trustee Keller, so move.
Trustee Wagner, also.
Trustee Keller makes a motion to move into the zoning board of appeals portion of the meeting, seconded by trustee Wagner. Here, no other comments or questions. Roll call vote to move into the ZBA meeting will be trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, if you give me a couple minutes, I'm gonna bring in our village attorney and then representatives from EMO Corporation. Then I'll have a brief introduction. And I'm not sure I'm gonna first call on Greg Deeds to make sure that, and I think Gary, let me get up at the appropriate time, I will bring up and will I see Gary on now. I will briefly in my comments here, we, we received the attached application from Mr. Hallenbeck on August 4th. Reference the EMO Corporation and I'll the, the request for a building lot coverage to be increased to approximately 38%. I will, we're gonna have from staff, both Bobby Durkey, our Director of Planning, and Andrew Horn. Bobby will speak on behalf of staff, not to steal anyone's thunder. Staff is recommending approval of this. I think EMO has been an incredible community partner for a long period of time here in the village of Vicksburg. Ultimately, once developed this 34,000 square foot facility in addition to our industrial park, has the potential to bring 45 jobs to our community and continue to demonstrate the progressive growth. But I will rely on Mr. Durkey to give a brief summary. Mr. Horn has been involved in this process and I certainly appreciate him attending tonight's meeting, available for questions. And then we will, Mr. Hallam, I'll, I'll call on you and you can introduce your team who you wish to speak on behalf of your project. So Bobby, go ahead and you can begin for us.
Thanks, Jim. Good evening, everybody. So I'll give a, you know, kind of summarize the memo I provided, Jim, that was in your staff report. The request tonight, as Jim said, is the EMO is requested to build a building that covers 38% of the parcel as opposed to the 30%, which is the maximum. This figure is how much square footage of the entire parcel is occupied by the structure. It's only coordinates limits the size of a, it's called a primary structure in every zone in the village. Every zone has this, this maximum. So the, the building that's there now was approved in 2015 by the planning commission and site plan interview. And at that time did show the dashed outline, which is today's addition. That was approved then with, you know, fully by the planning commission. And looking up the old minutes, there was no real reference or concern, at least for the, the addition. In July of this year, EMO submitted an application for site plan review. The, the building addition triggered that, that the site plan review was the review by the planning commission prior to the start of, of the project. And my role with the village is to, you know, review these, kind of give a technical analysis to assist planning commission. So in that process, I identified the building and, you know, notified EMO that, you know, they could apply for a variance for it, which is the request you have in front of you. The request is to the north of the building, a little over 32,000 square feet. Doesn't involve a change of use. There's a loading bay addition. And after my review, I don't see any other ordinance impacts in regards to setbacks, height, parking, and everything else. And I believe we have this scheduled to go to site plan review to the planning commission in September. And they, they will look at it and, you know, staff is of the opinion, variance should be sorted out for that. So the, the hardship provided by EMO was that this was, you know, shown previously. It's, it's something that was already well known beforehand. The use is consistent with the surrounding land uses. It's a low intensity manufacturing facility and won't increase any impacts on the neighboring properties. And as Jim said, the planning commission can render an opinion on a variance request in the, at the August meeting, they did fully. Every member voted in favor of approval. And some of the staff considerations to recommend approval are, the building does meet the setbacks. It has ample coverage to cover the stormwater. And, and there's plenty of parking. Essentially, it's with the, all the constraints of the ordinance, this property is not overwhelming the site. So that is, that was a big part of consideration. It's similar to all the surrounding land uses and it largely, you know, it's, it's a big piece of land that really isn't utilized now and really would have no other use where they're proposing the addition. So that, that's the background on it. And if there's any questions, I'm here to answer.
Bobby, Danny Olson, 32,384 square feet. I'm all two by four boy. How big a building? How many feet by how many feet?
If you give me a moment, I can pull the plan up and answer that question. And I don't know if maybe one of the engineers here knows.
If someone does, they can raise their hand, but while you're looking it up, Bobby, Andrew, did you have anything to add? I know you're part of the review and supported this request, but.
Yeah, no, Jim, I just, just in reviewing everything and, and just kind of echoing Bobby's thoughts there. We really look at it from the hardship standpoint and say, okay, well, what's the hardship? Well, the reality is we've got a partial that's, that's too small for the building. I know it sounds silly because it's such a massive parcel, but I mean, it, it still doesn't negate exactly what's going on there. So I, I know with land not available adjacent to it, we looked at that when that's exactly what a hardship is. That's exactly when you would use it. So.
The size of the building is 175 feet to the north and it is wide as the existing building, which is 184 feet. You're looking at the front of the building that's 184. So it's, it's the same width going back 175.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, I saw your hand raised. We're gonna assume that was for maybe the building size and it was. Okay, if no other questions for staff from the council, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gary Hallam with EMO Corporation.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So EMO has been very fortunate. When we built the building in 2015, we envisioned this addition. And we kind of said, if everything went perfect in our view, it would be, you know, in five years, we would have the current facility filled and ready to expand. And even despite COVID, our business has been very strong over the last several years. And we are forecasting growth each of the next three years. And business that's really already booked, so we have run out of space. We need the space to expand so we can add up to 13 more injection molding machines. It will be gradual over time. You know, in the immediate plan is three molding machines. The initial investment is 4.9 million. And we see that will be as much as 9.5 million over the next five years in terms of new equipment and machinery. So so yeah, that's the basis of, you know, we're just basically trying to build on the footprint that we originally submitted, I guess. The variance was not noted at the time when we originally submitted in 2015, so we'd appreciate your support in this effort. We plan to add as many as 45 new jobs over the next five years. And yeah, I think it's great for the community. We, we love being part of the.
Appreciate that, Mr. Hallam. Also, I know that Frederick's Construction is overseeing this with Greg Deeds. I don't know if you have another member of your team that wishes to speak or?
Yeah, so, so, so Mike Keith, our controller is on the demo. He's, he's very instrumental in the planning and oversight of the building construction. Mike, I'm not sure if you want to say anything.
Or if you're comfortable, we could open it up to the council if they have questions for you, Mr. Hallam, or any member of your team.
Sure, sure.
This is Mike Keith. Once again, you know, thank you guys for taking the time to have this meeting this evening. As Gary said before, in 15, we had a couple of meetings with the village and, you know, tax abatements. We really appreciate all your support. Like Gary also said, we, at that point in time, through, you know, just the tax incentive portion, we, we said we were gonna create 40 new jobs. We've done that. So I, I think it's time to look forward to the next five years and try to duplicate that same success, bring some more jobs to the village so we can both prosper together.
That is a very good plan, Mr. Keith. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you all having the opportunity to, to come in front of us tonight. I sat in on the planning commission review of this and they asked them really poignant and excellent questions. They were all answered to my satisfaction and I'm pretty excited personally about where we're going with this and, and filling up that that property. And, and, you know, EMO has been a phenomenal business partner with the village and we just look to continue that relationship. Jim, did we want to read into public comments of support petition?
Yes, and for the record, we did have this published in the appropriate timeframe with M Live. We also sent certified letters to all residences within 3,300 feet. Did receive one email that we would like to read. First, we'll start with public comments in support of the petition. This is from Doug Northrup from ANO Mold and Engineering. And he sent me the following email. Hello, Jim, I wanted to contact you as I'm not able to attend the zoning board meeting for EMO's request for a relief of building coverage. I'm in full support of this change. EMO and Gary Hallam are great neighbors in our community and contribute not only many jobs, but support many worthy foundations locally as well. Needless to say, they are a great asset to our community. So for the record, please consider my support for Gary Hallam and EMO's request for this change in the zoning. Thank you and best regards. Again, Doug Northrup, CEO of ANO, A and O Mold, Mold and Engineering Incorporated. And we, in the village, received no other written communication in support and no communication in opposition.
Hey, President Frisbee, point order. Do we need to open a public, public hearing now because we have an agenda item that's closed public hearing? So do we need to officially open up?
Did we not move into a public hearing?
Well, we just, we, we, we went to the ZBA portion of, you know, we went into the zoning board of appeals, but we did not open up a public hearing.
That was my intent to do so at that time, so.
Well, my.
Do a public hearing?
I move that we move to a public hearing.
Trustee Reister, second.
We have to do this all over, Carl?
No, no, I don't. I will go ahead and the motion's been made and supported and taken. I don't know that we need a public hearing. Once the zoning board of appeals meeting has opened, it's part of the listed, but let's go ahead and do it. Trustee.
Yes.
Trustee Keller made the motion, supported by trustee Reister. Roll call vote for the public hearing. Again, I'm not. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Yes, trustee Reister.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
Yeah, I apologize, but we, we have on, on B7, it's closed public hearing. So if we never opened it up, we, and we, and then we close the ZBA. So I'm just trying to make sure we're following Robert's rules. That's all. So we're all, we're all good.
Well, thank you, Carl, for the clarification. Now, that was, that was my intent, but if it wasn't done, thank you. So we, we have a good opportunity right now to ask some people at the, the top of EMO any, any pertinent questions, but you know, the hardship has been clarified by Bobby Durkey and Andrew Horn. The planning commission went over it very, very well. The staff is in support of the variance request. The building meets all applicable setbacks. Surrounding land uses are similar industrial uses. And it's the only parcel beyond 30% of provides reasonable scale of setback stormwater capacity surrounding areas, so if there's any, now's the time to ask of the EMO team while we have them on the phone. Any comments or questions? Trustee. Go ahead, Carl.
Go ahead, Rick.
Trustee Holmes, I, Gary would just like to ask you, first off, good evening, good to see you and thanks for joining. First off, I think anytime we can use existing commercial land in order to do something like this, instead of an agricultural field or, or an adjoining lot is probably really good use of land. That's something that I hear frequently from people in the community is that they, they like that good land management, I think. And this is a great example, I think, of exactly that. We're, we're doing the smart thing here. But I'm just curious though, Gary, can you talk a little bit about your organization and, and the commitment to Vicksburg? It's obviously, it's, it's an established manufacturing business that's here and, and you're committing millions of dollars, additional resources here. And I would have to believe that the organization has that ability to look elsewhere. Why Vicksburg? Why make that commitment here?
Thanks, Rick. Good question. So we have a very strong team at EMO. We have a very committed management team. A very high average tenure. I think our leadership team, the average tenure, which is 19 people, is 22 years. So we're committed to the area. We have a very strong engineering presence. So we wanna, we wanna maximize what our asset that we have in our people here in Vicksburg. And yeah, I mean, we've looked at going other places because obviously, you know, right now, the labor market is a challenge, but it's a challenge everywhere. So we're, we're pretty pleased that we're actually making gains in that area right now. So yeah, so you know, the, it was on the drawing board five years ago. And, you know, we do have some, still some property out at Portage Road we could expand. But really, this was the next phase to just add on to the, the plant. We've got a very successful, very modern world-class plant there in Vicksburg that we're very proud of, so.
Well, congratulations to, to the entire EMO team for, for the growth you're having and the success you're having and also for the continued investment in our community. So thank you.
I would just like to thank you also. This is trustee Reister. It's, it's very nice in this day and age to hear positive news. And I think this is very positive news. It's positive news for Vicksburg. And I'm just so grateful that you're willing to expand here in Vicksburg. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Gail. I mean, there's a lot of heritage here. I mean, our company started in 1969 as a locally owned company, so we really attach ourselves to those roots.
Trustee.
Trustee, trustee Keller here. Assuming all this is approved, that the, the variance is approved, what's your timetable as far as getting this addition? You know, shovel, shovels turning and, and stuff going off.
So we, we look at the building, the steel building has already been ordered. And the lead time on that is the end of November because as we know, steel, like many things are, is in short supply right now. So that was ordered. So November, end of November is when the actual steel can be on site. So we can start site work, you know, as soon as we get the approval here in September. Be ready for the building and maybe completion as soon as the end of the first quarter twenty twenty-two. So it's a pretty, pretty fast.
Very good.
Okay. Any other questions or accolades for the team? Well, hearing none, we, we appreciate the emo staff coming on. I'll need to, uh, open up this time for, um, public comments. If there's a citizen online that would, uh, like to speak in this regard, we'll open up this time for them now.
So we will, uh, we have one citizen on and, uh, uh, first we'll take comments and support and, uh, I do know the citizen knows how to operate the computer. So if I see a hand raised, which I don't, I think, uh, you can move to item B four.
To have it, uh, public comments in opposition. We'll limit it to four minutes. If there's anyone who would like to speak to that.
I see no one that's indicated they wish to speak.
Give an opportunity for, uh, emo to, uh, have rebuttal or final comments.
We're, we're good, Tim. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. Um, staff, we'll let you speak through your recommendation.
Yeah. And it's been well said here, uh, both by the trustees and Mr. Hallam. It's a, it's an incredible community partner, uh, that goes back fifty years. So, um, staff, uh, is, is very energetically and, and positively in support of approving this request. And as you and Mr. Holmes are aware, and Mr. Burkey stated, it was a unanimous by all members of the planning commission to support this as well. That's their recommendation to the ZBA for full support.
Was that given that new final comments or considerations? Will, um, motion to close the public hearing?
Trustee Keller so moved.
Trustee Wagner. Trustee, uh, Keller moved to close the public hearing, supported by trustee Wagner. Roll call vote. Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. So that's time for any final deliberation or comments or questions. In front of us, we have a, an appeal to relieve the total property. Let's just approval of the zoning variance. So if there's no other comments or questions or discussion, uh, I would ask of the council, what would be their desires in this?
Trustee Wagner, I'll make the motion to approve the zoning variance estimate.
Trustee Holmes, a second.
Trustee Wagner moved to support the petition for variance, uh, approval. The variance request approval and it was supported by trustee Holmes. Roll call vote will be trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
Very nice. Uh, Mr. Hallam, you can let your team know, uh, uh, that the variance, uh, request has been approved and we will move this to site plan review at the planning commission meeting in September, which I think is the thirteenth, the second Monday of September.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jim, and, and thank you everyone else. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you, everyone.
I see the majority, I see the majority of their cars in the parking lot at about six in the morning. So unless they want to stay for another couple hours of village council meeting, they're welcome to. Otherwise, you know, we'll.
Thank you so much.
Thank you double for that, Jim.
All right.
Thanks, everybody. See ya.
Bye.
Bye.
Uh, trustee Keller, I moved that we, we close the zoning board of appeals.
Trustee Reaster support.
Trustee Keller makes a motion to close the ZBA meeting, supported by trustee Reaster. There are no further comments. Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. So we'll move on to the village manager. I think you have an update on infrastructure.
Yeah, as you, uh, can see downtown, uh, from, uh, the park up until Main Street, I'm talking Prairie Street specifically. We have the, uh, flags out that are indicating, uh, the line that the curb will be that's scheduled to be put in, um, this Wednesday. Again, from, from the park, uh, heading eastbound and we'll go, uh, up until Main Street. Uh, we did, uh, start the, uh, southbound sewer track down Main Street today. This was their, uh, busiest area and by busy, I mean, the amount of pipes in that intersection. So they're just south of it and, uh, with good weather, we'll anticipate having the storm sewer all the way down to Washington by the end of this week. Also, uh, put in the, uh, water services on Kalamazoo Avenue today to four more residents to, uh, have them on the most updated water service as well as not being unleaded. So, so that section is completed. You're going to see, uh, road restoration work from the middle school westbound, uh, to Richardson. Uh, we anticipate, um, that that will be completed here in the next couple of weeks and then prep for a curb to come that, come in that direction as well. Right now in between Kalamazoo and Main Street on Prairie Street, we put in a new, uh, water main. And, uh, we're just making sure it goes through all the procedural checks. Uh, that's the testing and, and of the water and that it needs X a number of, uh, positive or past test, the test passing, I should mean, that's a better way to phrase it. And as soon as that happens, we'll have that water main, uh, put online. We do have, uh, right now, three businesses that are putting six inch water service for fire suppression on Prairie. So that work will continue as well. Should, as we're right now, subject to change due to weather, but we should have Prairie Street pretty well put back together in the new streetscape design by the end of September. And, and well, as we have now again, multiple crews, uh, from Milbacher in town, but I'll pause there for any maybe specific questions.
Jim, Danny Olson, um, I see the lines in front of the post office. One is the, uh, service of the post office going to be done. And how much of the sidewalk and that are they're going to rip up?
It, it was done today. So it's only those two, two sections that the pipe goes through. So they bore it, they bore it under the other. It's really under the road. Um, I, I don't, I'll have to look tomorrow, but when I last passed it, I don't think they had to pop the sidewalk. They brought in a boring machine to go under it.
Yeah. Yeah. I was there and talking to them when they were operating the boring machine. So, yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hey, Jim, it's Rick. Um, first off, I just wanted to acknowledge the appreciation for the weekly updates. Thank you. The second thing is just, just out of curiosity, we're several months into this. From your perspective, how are things going? Where are we at? From a kind of a high level, just, you know, I, I know every day you're, you're granular, you're in it. I can, you're, you're, you're a grinder.
No, no, I just smile because we go back twenty plus years in coaching football. It's like we're in the start of the season. I don't know if I don't want to be jinxed here, but actually internally, we're very pleased how it's going. It, it's ahead of schedule. Um, we, we were fortunate that Milbacher committed. They originally bid it out with two crews, but put a third crew on it. Obviously you're dealing, not only we talk dollars twelve million, but people in this town now see just the logistics of going between our Washington street lift station and the, the Spruce Street lift station. It, it's quite a run all the way through our downtown. So, uh, the short is we're very pleased, uh, and pleased. I say it every week. I hope it, um, just the patience, our business community has shown. Um, we talk internally, you know, this is the reality of the social media world we live in today. Uh, we get quite often by we, that's our entire team, individual contacts, uh, of very positive about the project today with the, the head manager of Family Fair, uh, who talks so positively about what it is going to do once completed. Um, and we get that quite a bit. So that person says at one time, very energetic. Unfortunately, society has people that are negative, um, and they tend to be negative every day. And, uh, with social media, they think they have a forum, uh, but if people really dissect local social media Facebook pages, it's the same people. So don't need to dwell into too much of that. It's, we get positive, uh, reinforcement every day by our business community. We put Alex Lee, I can't thank him enough. And like Friday, we really, uh, it's, you know, I, Alex, let's put something out about the businesses and ask for support from the public. And that's probably how it would read if I was putting it out. Alex takes the time to get, uh, I think eleven different photos of different businesses captioning those human elements. Our feedback from that post from business owners of unexpected increase in their businesses was multiple of them contacted us through the weekend, the start of the week. So we're really gonna continue to encourage our public here in the next, uh, two to three months as we, uh, complete this project downtown to support those local businesses and really try to make an effort to help these, uh, local biz and their local, uh, families that, that own these businesses, help them out during this time. But I, I, I try to watch myself, uh, and get too long-winded, but really you set it up nice unexpectedly. It, it's, we're, we're, we're very positive how it's going and really, really focused on what this is going to do for this community out thirty, forty and fifty years into the future.
Thank you, Jim.
And another nice thing is that you gave Deb and John their first vacation in a very long time.
Well, I've had two business owners, uh, besides them come to me and, and, and I think that's the creativity of those business owners. They're finding, Taco Bob's Todd just told me how, how they're really going to take advantage and he can shift his employees from Vicksburg out to the Madawan shop for a week while key remodeling happens. So, you know, they're, they're taking advantage in a positive way, uh, that they can. So.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Mallory on the infrastructure? Hearing none, Jim, I want to thank you for your follow-up. I know you want to speak to it, but your follow-up last Monday meeting and your subsequent follow-ups from phone and, and email conversations with residents. Thank you for that.
Yeah. And, and, and some people, uh, outside of the meeting, not, not talking trustees or that, I had some citizens contact. And anyone who knows me, uh, of, of, of what I believe in government, I love participation. I love, uh, input. And that's why ultimately I provide my cell phone out. Uh, sometimes I answer it too much, but I certainly, uh, am, am available when a citizen or, or a community person needs to speak and pick up the cell phone. So I, I really appreciate it. We did follow up. One of the, the big items I think are, uh, the speeding on Wilson is being addressed. It will be continued to be addressed by our police department. We're going to move to a proactive where we get the messaging out on our Facebook page and that we're, we're in the business of slowing people down. Not really, uh, want to, uh, have all enforcement there. The house on Prairie Street that was mentioned, uh, Wednesday, our building inspection, uh, team, along with our police department will work with the owner. But they'll do an interior and exterior, uh, site inspection. Uh, we'll come up with a list and we'll work with the owner to give a reasonable time to make those, uh, repairs if any are needed, but we will certainly, that's scheduled for, uh, this Wednesday. The, uh, gentleman talking about, I think it's important to note, um, the conversation about pads and the, uh, driveways and that there were two pads, uh, we did a complete review. Uh, two pads were prepped for asphalt that should not have been. Those have, if you drive on Prairie Street now, the finished road, you'll see two driveways have a great big pink or orange X spray painted on them. Those, that section of asphalt pad will be, uh, torn out and it will be replaced with cement at the contractor's expense. I also think it, it's needs to be noted. Probably, and I fumbled a little bit on, um, the statement in which trustee Keller's driveway was being worked on with, with a citizen kind of, uh, implying that there was, I don't, a word may favoritism or what. That's not the case. I want to be adamantly clear to the council that wasn't worked on trustee Keller's driveway that was witnessed. It was actual trustee Keller's driveway. Unfortunately for him, has a water valve right in the middle of the approach. And that water valve, the valve box was leaking. Uh, they knew it had to be replaced. And that was the work that was being done was actually on that water valve. So I wanted to make sure we clarify that. And, and encourage citizens, uh, to participate. I, I'm proud and will never be shy from the fact that I'll put this local government up against any on our transparency, which you can get in our website. And just to encourage everyone involved, I have in the past week with, with the internal staff team, focus on all the positives and, and all you have to do is look in our town to see tonight alone. We're, we're, this is the second over thirty thousand square foot addition going in our industrial park. Uh, the jobs created in that I could take up another hour of time, but I listen to Alex Lee quite often. So I'll just stop now.
Very nice, Jim. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Can I ask you a question, please? Or two? Jim, uh, last meeting, you talked about the possibility of hiring in a new police officer and new DPW employee. Where are we standing on that?
Yeah, we've, uh, we've completed the background investigation on both and both have been offered, uh, jobs. The, uh, police officer will start here in a couple of weeks and the DPW person will start on September seventh.
Okay. Thank you.
Great.
Any other questions for staff? We'll move on to committee reports. I didn't know if the pre-committee is met recently.
Um, I can, I can talk to that. Uh, we are right now in the process of finding out if we have any kind of a, uh, tree ordinance in the village because that's something that we, if we do have that, that's something that we do need. And we will be having our, our next meeting tomorrow night. Moving on and, um, hopefully, um, and down the line, we've got, um, some beginning ideas of what we want to do. So it's going along very well.
Thank you, Ms. Gail. Um, I've got a fire committee report. I was unable to attend the fire meeting. There was no posted Zoom or any way to attend it, Danny. So did it?
I have mentioned that to Jason and I have mentioned that to the, to the chief. If you go to the agenda for that day and click on it, there is a link there. So, um, and I sent the link to Mr. Mallory. Many of you may or may not know, uh, Saturday night, we had a large fire in the area. Uh, V Avenue East of Sprinkle, the Richard Seppi Company caught fire around six o'clock. Four departments assisted our department, um, Climax Portage Comstock, and I believe the fourth was Texas Corners. No one was hurt. The building was a total loss. There were five vehicles inside the building that were lost plus, uh, other equipment. Eight firefighters did suffer heat exhaustion, though. There has been no determination. They've already had a fire inspector and they're waiting for the insurance inspector to come in and they will go through it again. Company, believe it or not, is still operating. So, um, they still have enough equipment, um, to keep operating despite their loss. The fire board is looking at several locations, uh, for a new building. is looking at several locations for a new building. That's about all I can tell you on that right now. The last thing is at the motel on US 131 north of Schoolcraft, it is scheduled for burn late September, probably the last weekend of the month. So that is unless they come up with another problem. This thing's been delayed time and time again by asbestos. And we have finally pretty much got the clearance, but you never know. They may find something else, but right now it is a go. So, thank you.
Oh, I lost you here. You're on the website there and I, I'm not following it. So Danny, if we could talk offline at another time and you can show me how to, to get to it and I don't see.
Yeah, it, it took Karen about, about a minute to find it, so.
I got a sewer, did, was there any meetings, Carl, to re, excuse me, Jim?
I just want to make sure we have cats when it comes to.
Yes, yeah, that was.
That's the last one, D.
Was there a sewer update, buddy, Charles, Carl, in the meeting?
Yeah, we had a, we had a South County Sewer War Authority meeting last Tuesday morning. They had a representative, a couple of representatives from Southwest Michigan first there. Basically, just kind of putting on a small presentation on what a hypothetical company coming to South County would mean for the area, the economic impact. So, you know, it's the old adage, you know, every dollar spent in the community is spent over 10 times, you know, we spend 10 times. So it was, it was just kind of a hypothetical on, and how, you know, getting infrastructure in the area is, is of huge importance. So they also discussed the business corridor, US 131. Whether, you know, they're still interested in trying to put sewers down through there. They, they are still interested. They haven't quite figured out if they want to try to develop their own treatment facility still, or if they want to just hook on and go, you know, pass through Portage, similar to kind of what we do at Sprinkle Road. So Barton Lake, evidently there's been a petition that has been started amongst the residents to see if they're interested in pursuing a sewer around the lake, which would ultimately tie into our system and then on up the road. But so that process is starting with Barton Lake. Also, the administrator, which is Cindy Chapman, is retiring at the end of the year. And so they are taking, taking applications for that position. The current supervisor has, has also thrown his head in the ring to basically take on a dual role of supervisor slash administrator. So I, I voted, I, I, I moved for them to form a committee because I said they need to have a committee to sift through the resumes, which was, which was supported and voted on and adopted. So they'll be doing that. And by next month's meeting, they should have recommendations on who they think is the best fit for that position. Cindy is retiring, I guess, at the end of December. So that's about it.
Thank you, Carl. And that takes a 12D, the CATS committee.
Okay, next month or two, we will be getting visits from representative from CATS to talk about the millage vote for buses that's coming up in November. The census stats are in, so once they're reviewed, then urbanized areas will be reviewed to count. So what that kind of sort of means is that with Vicksburg and Schoolcraft and Portage being so close, our census will probably all be thrown together. Matteawan could be thrown in with Kalamazoo County because of the proximity and we're so close in that, which in a way is good for money-wise in that. Right now, we have to have at least 200,000 people in the area to be counted for a higher amount of cash to be distributed. Right now, Kalamazoo County is at 209,373. So that's unless some kids have been born lately. Portage George Project in Kalamazoo will hopefully be done by the end of October. Thank God for that. If any of you have been out to the west lately, I know Jim went over to St. Joe a couple of weeks ago and he said he came back down Red Arrow. Since then, Red Arrow's been repaved. All the exit ramps and entrance ramps along 94 are getting repaved. I know that Hartford was bad. Hartford right now is beautiful. It's so nice and smooth. I praised MDOT and Van Buren County for that. I don't know if they've done Stevensville yet, but that was the worst exit and entrance ramp I've ever seen in my life. It's like the moon landing. John Gessler was there and gave us an update that Kalamazoo County is going to receive $51 million to go to affordable housing, mental health issues, and broadband. Broadband's the big one that they're going to push for, but they are taking citizen input to see where the people want this money to go. But those are the three top ones that people are talking about. So that'll be it.
And that, on that, President Frisbee, and it's not related to the transportation number that trustee Olson's speaking about, but we did receive our census count for 2020 and that's 3, 3,706 people living in the village of Vicksburg, which is an increase of close to 300, I believe.
You're gonna say almost 400, right? I thought. All right. Well, we're the trustees time and we're on, on track. I'm going to mess it up here in a minute, but we're on track to completing an hour. But I'll start with Mr. Keller, trustee Keller.
I'm all good. Keep us on track.
Trustee Holmes.
Just a quick comment. I think Gail will, will like this, considering her background. I think it's really neat when you look around the community, all the positive things that Jim shared about the project being worked on in the village. It's also great to see the kids went back to school and they can't, went back to schools that needed much needed improvement. And, you know, when you, when you go in the buildings or you look at the, the new football field, it's, you know, it's, it's great to see that not only is this community going to, you know, get a nice downtown and the infrastructure project, but it's also the continued commitment for the residents here that voted for the millage to ensure that the schools are continuing to be maintained properly as well. So I think it all just speaks to all of our community and the fact that, you know, we, as I've always said, I've, I've never seen a millage for the schools or for kids not approved in this community. And it's good to see that the, the schools opened up as planned for them as well.
Thank you, Rick. Trustee Olson.
I'm fine. Thank you.
Trustee Wagner.
All set tonight. Thank you, Tim.
Trustee Reister.
I'm all set tonight, too.
I'm, I'm gonna blow it here.
Oh, no.
We're just, I'll do this real quick. You know, typically when I, a meeting in business, we'll start out with a safety minute. So I'll take it now. As we know, schools started back up. So let's be cautious to slow down around the school zones. Be alert. Children are often unpredictable, tend to ignore hazards, tend to take risks. So let's be very, very cautious, please. Give them, give them plenty of room. Oswald Art Funding is open at patronicity.com/ozw. We encourage anyone that would like to give, do. And we have the Fall Bike Celebration coming up, the weekend of September 17 through the 19. Fun weekend with bikes, bicycling, live outdoor concert by amp, music by amp, and it is brought to us by the Lions Club. How cool is that? You can get more information at fallbikecelebration.org. So just encourage people to, to look at it. A lot of events going on and be cautious for our kiddos that are on the roads. With that, I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting. Oh, and it is one minute till eight.
So moved.
So moved. Okay. Support.
Yes, yes, Jim.
Trustee Wagner made the motion, supported by trustee Reister. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed can say nay and stay on.
Thank you. Good night.
Have a good evening, everyone.